Call is being to order. I'd invite you to begin with the pleasure of allegiance. Roll call.
Colpak, here. Pepcorn.
Here.
Preston. Here. Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here. Engineering, a stretch of NP Avenue from 10th Street to 8th Street has been bid and awarded. Vote contractors will begin their work in early June. This is the first year of a planned two-year construction project on NP Avenue. Next year, the plan is to reconstruct NP Avenue from 8th Street to near Broadway. Engineering is currently working on the next phase of design from 8th Street to Broadway. In accordance with downtown in-focus plan for NP Avenue, the street design will be narrowed and will allow for inclusion of cycle tracks on each side of the street. Because of this, engineer plans on running a two-week trial at the intersections of 8th Street and NP and at Broadway and NP using stop signs to signal the control of the intersections versus operating traffic signals. This will allow engineering and fire to understand the impacts of this style intersection control prior to making a permanent change after construction is completed next year. Look for engineering staff to be installed at four-way stop controlling intersections at 8th Street and Broadway this week and setting the signals to an all-way red flash. Firefighters. Firefighters had a course this last weekend just to help other people understand the extent of work and what they do. Eric Eisenler was the one who set it up and Local 642 came out and helped as well. Would like to say it was a great course and learned a lot about what firefighters go through and learned a lot about what they do in community development, how they help out a variety of different ways in the community. Would say they do a lot of off-work time to help people in the community, which is very good to see. And I guess between Peter and Denise, Peter won the race to find the infant in the burning building, is that right?
I didn't know that.
Oh, okay.
Good to know.
But they learned how difficult it is to see with smoke in your way. Library. The library is hosting a spring plant swap tonight, Monday, May 15th, from 6:00 to 7:00 at the James Carlson Library outside the library, Learning Gardens. Participants are asked to bring seed packets or plants to trade or share, which could be divided perennials, starting garden plants, or propagated slips. If you don't have anything to bring, that's okay. Everybody will go home with something new. All are welcome to attend this free session. Beginner yoga, yoga lessons for adults is scheduled weekly on Thursday evenings at 6:00 PM this month at the James Carlson Library. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and on May 2nd, the Fargo Cast Public Health, Fargo Police Department, and the 463 Foundation hosted a news conference at the Fargo Theater to premiere Faces of Suicide, which is a second suicide prevention public service announcement. It was produced by our comms team. It's important that in this community, we do our best to make sure we're helping out one another when it comes to mental health. Faces of Suicide stresses how critical it is to understand what you cannot tell just by looking at someone if they are struggling or hurting inside. There is no one look of suicide. Mental health can be invisible. Let's watch this video and recap the unveiling event. Together during this month, what we'd like to do is normalize mental health conditions in our society, encourage people to talk about seeking help in their times of need, put emphasis on prevention, provide individuals with tools they need to guide them through life's crisis situations, and never give up hope. Let us never give up hope on our children or our people that need help. Let us know that somewhere or someplace, we perhaps can help change the course of somebody's life.
Suicidal behavior is complex, and there's no one single cause. It does not discriminate. People of all genders, ages, ethnicities, and income levels can be at risk.
Tonight's video was created to break through stereotypes associated around suicide, but more importantly, to normalize conversations around mental health and to make our community aware that there is help and that no feeling is final.
The kids and teens in this video are every kid and teen. They are athletes, artists, students, friends, sons and daughters. These kids and teens are just like the kids and teens that all of us know and love. Our goal is to be proactive and to teach that hard conversations, while awkward and scary, are necessary to have even if you don't suspect that your child and teen are suffering.
I would like to thank the family members and friends who so willingly said yes to being a part of Faces of Suicide. The amount of trust you put in us to make sure that your loved one is respected and honored, that trust is truly very remarkable, and we are so thankful that you came alongside of us to bring this important message to our community.
There is no one look of suicide.
Liam Med, age 15, son, brother.
Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for 10- to 24-year-olds in North Dakota. Seventy-five percent of all suicide attempts think about it for less than one hour.
Bella Krajczek, age 14, daughter, granddaughter.
Since 2007, nationwide suicide rates have increased by 56% for 10- to 24-year-olds.
Kayden Steiner, age 15, son.
Brother.
It's likely that someone in your family or friend circle is contemplating ending their life. Warning signs can include withdrawing from activities, a change in eating habits, a change in sleeping habits, more irritable or emotional than normal. They may talk about shame or guilt, not wanting to be here, being a burden or a mistake, being trapped, dying, or what happens after life.
Eli Johnson, age 19, son, cousin, friend.
Immediate life stressors matter. Relationships, finances, legal issues, medical prognosis, public humiliation, shame.
Nolan Wilson, age 11, son, brother.
You have value. We care about you. Reach out to someone. There is no shame. No feeling is final. You're not alone. There are resources. Help is available. The National Suicide and Crisis Line is 988. In an emergency, dial 911.
Just like to have just a moment of silence. We lost Mark Bittner, who was part of our engineering department, who has been very instrumental in our flood fights and also helping us set up our flood preparation for the diversion. So I'd just like to have just a moment of silence remembering Mark Bittner. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the May 1st regular meeting 2023?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 1 through 34?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Preston and Strand. Roll call vote, please.
Preston.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Colpak.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
We have residents' comments. In person, we'll have Wes Filome.
Wes Filome, he/him/his pronouns. I'd like to start by saying happy belated heavenly birthday and Mother's Day to Aniuwe Matchik. I really think it's time the people of Fargo wake up. Our city government is being used like a piggy bank by the elite, and our city leaders refuse to do anything to stop them. Instead, some choose to even invest in the pillaging. Handing over city land at a discount hasn't been enough. The millions in incentives haven't been enough. Our city government now wants to use millions of our taxpayer dollars to build a parking ramp that will serve our billionaire governor and the elite, who will attach unaffordable housing and businesses to it. In order to do this, our $2 million parking fund will be wiped clean. Our city will take out a $16 million loan and then create a $2 million TIF. Under Mayor Mahoney's leadership, our credit slash bond rating has gone from pristine to spiraling off of a cliff. Our Director of Finance is suspended and under investigation. Last city meeting, Deputy Mayor Preston brought up concerns about a structural budget problem. Deputy Mayor, respectfully, you are part of that problem. In 2021, you and four other city leaders voted to sell a downtown parking ramp for $9.6 million. Two years later and less than 200 yards away, you all are now wanting to sink 20-plus million into building another parking ramp. Commissioner Strand, imagine looking downtown, seeing all the houseless people battling mental health and addiction, people you claim to care about, and then thinking millions of our taxpayer dollars would be better served on a parking ramp than the people who need it most downtown. People over property. We won't take out a loan to deal with mental health, but we'll do it for a parking ramp. We won't take out a loan to deal with addiction, but we'll do it for a parking ramp. What happens if our country defaults on its debt and we go into a recession, dumping tens of millions of dollars into a parking ramp? You all will have to answer for this. It is not too late to stop this. Because if you all won't, then we, the people, will. I have no problem sounding the alarm. Thank you.
In virtual, I believe we have Tony Garrick. Is Tony on? He's not on, okay. We'll go to public input here, opportunities. There's a public hearing, annexation of property on the northeast corridor of Section 15, Township 140 North, Range 49 West, containing 112 acres, more or less contained from the 5123 regular meeting. This is the first reading of annexation. Donald Crust to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Crust with the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next two items, which include ordinances prepared by the City Attorney's Office. These two items really go together as one project. Our applicant, Paul Hyde of Hyde Development from Minneapolis, is going to be joining us virtually. He was just logging in when I checked in with him a moment ago here, so he should hopefully be with us. We'll start talking slow here. Our first item here, as the mayor has stated, is an annexation of a portion of the northeast corridor, Section 15. That is the crosshatched area here to locate this. This is Amazon, and this is I-29, and these are the city sewage lagoons. Here's a close-up of that. It is, you know, 112 acres there, almost entirely owned by Paul Hyde's ownership group there, Dakota Commerce Center 5. There's a very small area owned by the city of Fargo that is going to become dedicated right away. This plat depicts the annexation area. The property is outside of the Fargo city limits. The applicant has requested this annexation through a petition, so an owner-initiated annexation. The proposed annexation area is depicted on Tier 1 2007 growth plan as, and being within Tier... Was that Mr. Hyde?
Paul, are you on?
Yes, sir. Here I am.
Thank you, sir. Is depicted within the Tier 1 area, which is the area intended for immediate growth for the city. The area is designated as industrial, which is the proposed development. The subdivision plat will give more details on this project, which will be coming up as the next item. Again, the applicant, Mr. Hyde, is online. The recommendation is shown on the screen. And Commissioners, if I may ask, if you do choose to recommend approval of this, please use the motion on the screen. It corrects, I realized there was an error in the motion that's in your packet, so the one on the screen is the one you want to use there. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this annexation? Anyone present who wishes to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Paul, do you want to say anything?
Just thank you to the council or the commission and Don and his team for their patience in working through this. We've signed up our second building in the park with Marvin Windows again. We're starting our third building here next week and already getting activity on this parcel, so we're eager to get going and grateful for your cooperation and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, and then I'll make a motion.
Mr. Preston.
So, Donald, you mentioned in the memo that the city owns a part of this parcel. Can you point to?
Yes, ma'am.
What it is?
We'll go this, this little piece here.
Oh.
That little, yeah. It was left over, I believe it was left over when Amazon got developed, and that property line swung down there instead of going straight across. So that will, when you see the next item, ma'am, you'll see that that just becomes part of the street. So we are aware of that, and we, you know, go along with the...
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that was on the screen, just follow me.
Yep, and is there a second?
Second.
Colpak, second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston.
Aye.
Colpak.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Public hearing, Dakota Commerce Center North Edition. Rule recommended by the Planning Commission on 8/22/10/22, or 22, and continued to 5/1 regular meeting. Donald Crust to explain.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Again, so filling in the space that was the annexation from the last item will be Dakota Commerce Center North. It is so referred to because this was Mr. Hyde's original Dakota Commerce Center down here, which was done a couple of years ago. And then there's the Amazon property, North Fargo Industrial Edition, and then this one. The site looks like this here, just a few quick photographs on... Let's go back one. So you're looking at 37th Street and 52nd Avenue, and then the plat will dedicate 48th Avenue and 41st Street. So you'll see here's looking north on 37th Avenue. This is a little corner of Amazon property here. This is looking westerly along where 48th is going to be. This is the subject property. This is standing on the embankment of the Sewage Lagoon and taking a look across the property there. Again, Amazon, the interstate here. And then this is looking along the westerly property line where the, where 41st Street will be dedicated. So this is the subject property here, and this is the adjacent property. The zoning is actually agricultural. It shows us white on this map because it wasn't annexed, so now that it's annexed. Is agricultural. The proposed zoning is LI Limited Industrial, which is consistent with the growth plan designation of industrial for this area. And as you see, all these other properties here have also developed as limited industrial. The plat creates seven lots in one block. As Mayor, you read there, there were actually two Planning Commission hearings on this one. The original plat only had four lots. That was the August 2nd one, hearing. And the applicant later wanted to reconfigure it into seven lots. So since there was such a significant difference, they had to go back to the Planning Commission October 4th. So that's why there's two Planning Commissions in there. As you'll see, there are no internal streets on this subdivision. They're all dedicated externally. We did require the applicant to provide some cross-access easements here. This is part of the plat. And there's mentioned in your packet a subdivision waiver for block length. That is what these account for. Since there is no actual cross-street, these are required and shown on the plat, and these will be maintained internally by the, by the property owners there. They're not city streets. Also included in your packet, I don't have a slide for this, is the airport proximity agreement. This is something that's required for all properties that are near the airport and the Sewage Lagoons. There's also a section there about proximity to the Sewage Lagoon. Just so the current and future property owners are aware of the presence of these, of these land uses nearby the airport and the Sewage Lagoons, and a copy is included in your packet. The recommended motion is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. Again, Mr. Hyde is with us virtually. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? Is anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Colpak, is it, has it got a second?
Second.
Second. Preston. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak.
Aye.
Preston.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Public hearing, application by Corvent Medical for property tax exemption for a project located at 445th Street South, Suite 400, which applicant will use the manufacturing of medical ventilators, warehousing ventilators, and accessory shoes with ventilators, continued from 5123 regular meeting. Mike to explain.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So the application presented before you is indeed for Corvent Medical Incorporated, and it is requesting a five-year new industry tax exemption for the manufacture of medical ventilators. The project has been certified as primary factor, and it did go before the Economic Development Incentive Committee and was approved, recommendation to approve the incentive. And we have Ryan Ossheim from the FMEDC here to present information and answer questions.
Thanks, Michael. Mayor Mahoney, members of the commission. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about a company we've been working with for several years and the type of company that we're really excited about attracting, bringing here and growing in the Fargo community. Medical device company, they're specializing in a unique next generation of ventilator technologies. And I'm sure Richard Walsh, the CEO, will tell you more about that when he comes up in a moment. But we've been working with them for almost two years now, since July of 2021. They located in the NDSU Research and Tech Park in January of 2022 in about 2,500 square feet of space. The company, at the time, was developing and engineering their next-gen systems, and part of their evolution and growth plan included expanding into manufacturing space. So within just over a year's time, that's where we're at. They're graduating from their R2 space and looking at commercial space in the community to continue growing. So they're currently at, and the number's probably not even accurate, but as of the time of the filing, eight employees. I found out from Richard earlier today, they just hired eight interns from NDSU. So they see that relationship and the connectivity to NDSU being really vital to their growth. I just want to mention their location on the West 45th Business Center. Within a year, they're expecting to have 17 full-time and six part-time. Within two years, they're expected to be at 27 new jobs. These are high-paying jobs. You can see in your packet, they're averaging $92,000 in salary in year one and $97,000 in year two. And that is before benefits. So I wanted to just mention that, you know, in supporting companies like this, they're reinvesting a tremendous amount of resources back into the company as they grow and start to realize sales and develop their market. So partnership with the community is critical at a time like this. So with that, I'm going to bring up or ask CEO Richard Walsh to come up.
Mr. Chair.
Pepcorn.
Ryan, before you introduce him, could you, there was an article in your most recent newsletter talking about the diversity of our economy and how for a small area, we're of, I mean, we're comparable to Minneapolis. Can you talk a little bit about that article? I'm sure you know what I'm talking about, but if you wouldn't mind talking about that. But people want to know why our economy is doing so well, and it's because we're so diverse. We have education, health, anyway.
I think I do, and so if I don't answer it, let me know. But there, so some data came out recently that we, that we were part of analyzing. It's part of a national study, and Fargo is in the top 385 communities in the country. Fargo ranks in the top 19% for economic diversity, which is really powerful. That speaks to the resiliency and the economic diversity of our community. The biotech sector itself, within our community, we've run some analytics on that. And within the last 20 years, so around 2001, 2002, the GDP that our bioscience sector put out was somewhere around $15 million. It's over $202 million now as a cross-section of our gross domestic product. So tremendous growth in that area, tremendous growth in the number of jobs that we've added. We're something over 5,200 jobs in the biotech sector.
Can I just ask one more, Ryan? So the thing, obviously Aldeveron being here has been a great thing. Would you say these are some of the coattails of them a little bit?
Yeah, I would say Aldeveron certainly has created a center of gravity, and I think with the sale of Aldeveron, we've also seen a growing interest. But I think additionally, we have, and again, Richard might be able to speak to this, we have people coming to our community. They're getting exposed to the opportunity here, the connectivity with the research university, the talent pool that we have here. So we've got obviously tremendous engineering talent. Software is becoming more and more important. NDSU and UND are partnering to create a biomedical engineering program. I say create, they've created it. There's students that are going through that program right now. So these companies are finding that talent. They're finding that the talent is world-class. They're finding access to capital that they need. They're finding willing partners at the city and state level. And they're going and they're telling their friends. So they're going back to California, they're going back to the Twin Cities, they're going back to the coast, and they're telling their friends, hey, you have to come check out Fargo. There's really quite a lot going on there, and I think it's probably, you know, a bit of a hidden gem. And so we're finding that when we do good things, that word of mouth then kind of perpetuates, and we're seeing more opportunity from that.
Thank you.
So I'll bring Richard up with Richard Walsh, CEO of Corvent Medical.
Richard Walsh, President and CEO of Corvent Medical. Want to thank the mayor and the commissioners for letting us attend tonight. We moved the company here about two years, let's see, it was 2022? It's a little over a year now. And we had about eight or nine employees. We now have 20 employees at Corvent Medical. Today, we started eight interns from NDSU. They'll work full-time for us this summer, and that includes engineering interns, finance interns, and marketing interns. We also started a full-time software engineer, embedded software engineer. What's interesting about this gentleman, he was a resident of Fargo, and he was thinking about leaving Fargo from his present company, and we kept him here. He came to us and just started today full-time. We build medical ventilators. It's a cool thing because it saves lives. We ship them all over the world. We've shipped them to the Ukraine in support of the mission over there. We've shipped them all over the United States. The state of North Dakota actually has them in their stockpile now for mass casualty events and epidemics and such. We are presently in about 2,500 square feet at NDSU. We're getting ready to submit our 510K approval. That's a permanent approval from the FDA for our next-generation ventilator, at which point we'll be moving manufacturing, warehousing, and R&amp;D into Fargo. We'll go from 2,500 square feet to about 17,500 square feet, maybe 18,000 with shared space here in the next 90 to 120 days. And we'll hire probably about 25 people. The plan is about 25 people full-time in the next 24 months, and that'll grow to about 80 full-time employees here in Fargo over the next four years, four to five years. I live downtown here on Broadway. I love Fargo, and everybody says, why do you go to Fargo? And I said, you know, because of the climate. And everybody laughs, and I say it's because of the business climate. And, you know, we've had, we've enjoyed incredible amount of support from everybody, from the state to the federal level, to the local level. You know, it's truly been a wonderful experience moving here and moving my company here. It's really given us the ability, for a small company, to... It's really given us the ability for a small company to really grow and prosper and to, most importantly, bring back a technology that, for the most part, is not made in the United States anymore. Ventilators have been around 50 to 60 years. You know, they're made all over the world. They're made in Germany, Switzerland, they're made in China. But only, there's only really one or two ventilator companies here in the United States, and we're going to change that. 95% of the ventilators that are used in most hospitals around the U.S. are made either overseas or by a company that's owned by an overseas company. They may be built here, but that, you know, they're owned by a foreign company. We're going to change that. We're going to build ventilators, transport ventilators, hospital-to-home ventilators, which is the future, CPAPs, BiPAPs, oxygen generators, you know. It's reshoring a technology that should have never left the United States. I'm going to do it right here in Fargo. Ryan mentioned Aldeveron. We want to be the Aldeveron of medical device here in Fargo, North Dakota.
That's kind of a billion-dollar question there. I hope, Richard, you're right about that.
That's what we're shooting for, mayor.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone present who wishes to speak to this application?
I am speaking directly to the people of Fargo. If you all cannot see that our city leaders are putting business before it is putting people, every single time our city leaders hand out a tax exemption and allows million-dollar, billion-dollar businesses to be exempt from taxes, we as people, everyday people, starving, struggling, check to check, we are the ones who have to foot the bill. These are businesses who can easily get these projects done, but take the choice to have us foot those bills. At some point, we have to stand up and say that this is not right. With economic conditions tightening every single day, with inflation going up, with housing going up, where we all are barely able to make it, we are going to need our city government at some point. We are going to need these critical resources, and they're going to go into tax exemptions, and they're going to go into parking ramps, and we will not have the dollars and resources that we need from our city government. At some point, we have to stand up. A majority of the time that these businesses come forward and ask for a tax exemption, they basically get it. They are hardly ever told no. And you all know that they can afford to do this without having to make taxpayers foot the bill, but you all continue to allow it. This city is going to grow regardless. I did not agree with Commissioner Garrig, but I can clearly see his vision and what he was saying the entire time, and nobody really listened to him. And now it's super apparent. These businesses are going to be able to grow just fine without forcing us to have to pay for it. Our schools, our kids, mental health, addiction, these are all dollars that are going to be taken away from these resources and give it to the rich. And we, as poor people, will continue to starve. We need to stop this.
So any else who wishes to speak to this? Close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kolpak.
Mr. Chair, I need to disclose and ask the commission, if I have a conflict of interest on this vote, I was an officer of the EDC board at the time these negotiations started.
Are you on the board now?
No.
And do you have any financial gain from this company coming to town?
No.
No? I think at this point, the board, the commission just has to vote whether she could vote or not. Is that right, John?
I move that she participate freely.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You can vote.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? So we have a policy of how we do economic development in the community, and basically, the policy points out we rate or count different points. Normally, you have to get 104, 100 points, and this company gets 146. It provides good-paying jobs. It allows economic growth in the community. It allows for growth in the community, and City of Fargo will earn our taxes from this company that well beyond what we're giving in a tax break at this time. Continuing in our community growth, all the tax breaks that have been given have been back three times value to the community. And that means 30 times value in taxes. So that helps out all the people. The city has a very aggressive program with the engagement center, social services, variety of different things that we do do for all the poor in our community. And we continue in public health to do many things for the addiction issue, and are going to spend more money in addiction as well. So I would debate this company is an excellent addition to the community, and will pay far more taxes than this taxpayer ever gives them. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Discussion regarding outdoor amplified sound permits. Mike Redlinger is going to stick in for Steve today.
Yes, thank you, mayor and commissioners. I am representing the city auditor's office tonight. Steve Sprague is out this week. And Captain Helmick has been another assistant on a small committee that we've had internally, just visiting with the city attorney's office about a request from Jade Presents. I included that request in your packet this evening, so you can see that, as well as a cover memo from the city auditor. Just to give the background about where we were in the city ordinance, both pre-pandemic and then during the pandemic. Effectively, the request from Jade Presents is to restore the moratorium that was embedded within the emergency declaration under COVID-19 when we were under that emergency declaration. That permitted five amplified sound events outdoors every 30 days during that period of emergency declaration. Now that that declaration has ceased, we are back to the standard ordinance. That ordinance provides for one amplified sound permit every 30 days. And I would just note that if there's any change in this policy, one way or the other, whether it's one, two, three, or more amplified outdoor sound permits, those would apply not just to this request or, but to anybody else who would maybe want to host an event, perhaps in South Fargo, North Fargo, wherever it might be. So there isn't a staff recommendation on this item this evening. We wanted to just have a conversation first with the commission, noting that it's really the commission's prerogative to either increase that number to something more than one or just keep the status quo. The status quo would be keeping the ordinance as it's stated today. There'd be a no-action alternative that would permit the promoter to allow one event every 30 days outdoors amplified. And so we also just want to make one last remark. We really view this as a distinct matter from the noise and vibration study, RFP, that is now underway. It took some time to get that off the ground. That is now well underway. Captain Helmick is now returned from his training as well, so we just appreciate his assistance with that. That really is specific to Broadway. That's specific to the individual street performance matter. This is really about professional concert promotion outside of Broadway at licensed establishments, like in this case Fargo Brewing. So I'll leave it at that. Happy to answer any questions. And again, we, on behalf of the city auditor's office, and Captain Helmick, myself, just want to have a conversation with the commission if there's a desire in directing us as staff to do anything additional as it relates to this request. Thank you.
Discussion by the commission. Mr. Kolpak, you were at the meeting. Were they talked about this?
I was, Mr. Chair, and I would just point to the fact that this would, clearly, there's a concern about straining police resources that was part of the memo that was included, as well as increasing the number of complaints. And I certainly support getting through the noise study before we make any changes to the existing ordinance as it stands today. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Preston.
So the complaint calls that have come in, whether they're anonymous or not, was it related to noise or was it related to some other issue?
Actually, I don't have that detail in front of me this evening. It was just noted for background and for the public. There were three calls, two of which were anonymous. There's just an observation from the city auditor that we believe an increase in permits would likely generate additional calls. But I don't have the breakdown if they were noise-related or otherwise, so I apologize.
So I seem to remember getting at least a couple of emails that were complaining about noise. I'm assuming that's probably in addition to these phone calls, perhaps. You know, I guess I struggle with why this isn't related to the noise ordinance, because it's all about noise, is it not?
It can absolutely be contemplated, as Commissioner Kolpak just stated, to any kind of ordinance revision after the noise and vibration study. That is really specific more to measurement downtown on Broadway. And whereas this is about an existing outdoor amplified sound ordinance that exists on the books today and really a period in time in which you lifted restriction to allow for more permissive events for a period of time that now have gone away. So they're distinct at the time and at the present, but they can be merged together into a more comprehensive recommendation at the conclusion of that study process downtown in Broadway, too.
Can I just ask one more clarifying question? So are you saying that if a complaint comes in about noise from these events, that that measurement wouldn't be done?
Not as a part of the noise and vibration study. The limits of that study.
No, I'm talking about ongoing complaints that come in.
So we don't.
Not necessarily about the study.
Sure. Happy to clarify what the study is. So the study is using a professional vendor with noise measurement equipment in the immediate Broadway area for the restaurants and bars. So they don't have scope to go to other off-site or out-of-immediate downtown locations. We received two proposals in response to that RFP. So any kind of complaint call that would be received for noise today at a special event like this, that would be out of the downtown, would be registered and through dispatch, like it is today conventionally, through the dispatch and 911 system or non-emergency 911.
This is really a question of, we've authorized outdoor events or permits, and it's how many you can have a month. So the question, and it's one a month right now, and Jade is recommending two or three a month. And it becomes like in the Fargo Brewery, that's kind of part of their business model right now, is having concerts once in a while. Neighborhood kind of knows that's going to happen, but Tailgaters does it downtown. There's different venues. Frank stood it down south. So I think the question is, is how many can they have a month? We are allowing the noise. It's not the noise issue that, it's an issue, but that's not what the issue of this issue is. This is an issue, can I have more? Can I have more than one a month at my bar? And we did it for COVID because people weren't just getting out, but people are now getting out. Jade makes a good argument out, people like it in the community and like to go to these events and spend some money. But it's really a question of the commission, do you want to allow two a month? And the question Commissioner Kolpak brought up, and it does have our police force involved, basically, because they have to be out and about. In talking to Chief Zabowski, we talked about maybe two a month would be more reasonable, but we really don't prefer four or five a month, because that does involve more in the neighborhood and more issues that may come about. Three phone calls or a couple of emails are not allowed for this type of venue, so it does not seem like it's overwhelming. But it's really a question of where do you want our staff to go on this? Because this is separate from the noise ordinance. Can I have more venues? So I'm not sure, Mr. Kolpak, who we need in the room, because you met with Jade, but do you need more people or more input, or do you need a study, or what do you need? Mr. Strand.
Thank you. Michael, I'm just curious, does this affect every part of the city equally?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yes, it does.
And are the proposals just for that one sector up by Fargo Brewing? Or is it the changes would be across the board, across the city?
Yep. So the live request today is for Fargo Brewing, but it could be for any purveyor, any operator elsewhere in the city, south, north, or on the western edge of the community, if they wanted to step forward and also do amplified sound. If we were to permit five, in this case, or three, or two, whatever the number might be, above and beyond the ordinance, that would also be available for other operators elsewhere.
And what type of other operators might exist, and where would they have these concerts and events? I mean, are they going to be in neighborhoods, or I just am trying to visualize where they'd be?
In past practice, it's been a combination of neighborhood bar restaurants. It's been Main Avenue. It's been other restaurant bars primarily. But yes, plausibly, you could also request and step forward seeking a police department approval for an event, perhaps at a different commercial space altogether, you know, on South University or at 25th Street or 32nd Avenue, et cetera. Yep.
Commissioner Pepcorn.
So, Mr. Chair, when we met, the concern was if you allow them to have five, that's one every weekend, and maybe two. That's for one location. But then if there's multiple locations, to give an example, the Club Africa, that was another location that would, and I guarantee you, that would be another place that would have multiple, then Tailgaters. There'd be more downtown. And so then, if you have five and you start multiplying these out, that's a lot of events. And that was the main thing with the law enforcement, is how do you make sure we have public safety with people crossing streets and all that? So I, when we did this, it was because of COVID. It was an outdoor activity. It helped the bars and restaurants to survive when they were, a lot of them were shut down for a long time. That, this was our way to help that, because outdoors, it was a little bit more open. But at this point, I would, I think we should return to the one, to what we did before, and then if we change it later, we can. But I think for now, just from the standpoint of this could spread, I mean, then there'd be, it's a lot of, that's a lot of concerts. And that might be great for some people, but I just think, especially in the neighborhoods, it would have an impact. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kolpak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to answer your question of my earlier comment of the noise study, I do recognize it was for Broadway only, but there will be data collected because of similar noises from outside concerts that would help inform future ordinances and any changes, which I think would help inform a future decision.
So as it presently sits, I would understand as we go back to pre-moratorium, they would go to one a month. Is that correct? Mr. Pepcorn, that's right. Is it?
And if you, I don't know if you're looking for a motion, Mike, but that would be my motion. Is that what you're looking for?
Really, the commission's prerogative, if you want a motion, the do-nothing alternative right now is your existing ordinance. There really is no action required of the commission tonight, even to do that. You could affirm that by a voice vote and resolution, but the ordinance on the book today is one event every 30 years amplified.
So we're to wait for the noise study to come back and may discuss it after that study is in, is what I understand, the consensus of the commission? Is that correct? I guess so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Item 40, recommendations to direct appropriate staff led by engineering department to examine all possible solutions to street racing and speeding. Brenda, can you come up to the podium in case we have some questions of your department? Commissioner Preston.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if everybody else is getting phone calls and/or emails, but I certainly am still about the street racing and the noises generated from it. And we've had some very brief kind of conversations, specifically, Brenda, when you come to the podium before, but it was off the cuff. And what I'm asking is just that the staff go back and just take a little bit more of a concerted effort to look at possible changes, whether that be something like street lighting changes or speed bumps, anything else that might be appropriate, and then just bring back that information to us in four weeks.
Brenda Daring.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Preston emailed me and asked me my thoughts on that. And, you know, we visited internally with my leadership team, and we think, you know, we'd like to sit down with PD, understand more about routes, timing, what we're looking at. And then we know this is a nationwide problem and see, as we look at those routes and where they are on our system, what has been used and what options we would have to maybe do some improvements to the problems that we're having and see if there's been other cities that are having success stories with any of those tools.
Commissioner Pepcorn.
So, Mr. Chair, this is a law enforcement issue. From my perspective, this is, and I think we did a good job last fall where they did some extra law enforcement, where they had the highway patrol, and they actually did air enforcement. And so to me, that's, I agree, engineering can do some things, but to me, at the end of the day, this is law enforcement. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just respond to that. I agree, it's partially law enforcement, but there's no way we're going to have enough police officers to be on those multiple streets. What, eight hours a day, seven days a week? So that's the only reason why I'm asking for the additional look at this, so. And just to move it forward, I'll make the motion that's on the document.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Further discussion? Right now, in all our street designs, we do look at traffic slowing, those types of things, but one of the things, if we did a traffic light change and made it slow down, then people commuting from home would have a disruption of their travel, right?
Correct. I mean, there's going to be pros and cons to anything we evaluate, and we just need to bring that forward and have that discussion. I mean, really, what we want to do is get to the roots of what are the routes? And are they all arterials? Are there some more minor arterials or collectors? And just understand that route, and so, and the timing, and that will let us kind of be able to take a look and evaluate, is there any opportunities? And then we'll come back. I think that was my understanding, is start those discussions, come back, and see if we do have some opportunities there.
So would you mind, on your recommended motion, adding police to this? Could you just have engineering? Commissioner Preston.
Certainly. When I indicated to direct staff, that was broad. However, whatever, or whoever, engineering would want at the table, so, yeah, that's-
Because I know the chief and I talked today, we do have motorcycles out now, and they've had quite a few arrests over the weekend, and they're making progress in that. And they have some other tools that we're talking about as well, so that could be discussed in that meeting as well. Commissioner Colpak.
Mr. Chair, thank you. My question, Engineer Derrick, is if four weeks is enough time in collaboration with the police department to come back to this commission? I, too, am hearing from constituents that this clearly is a problem.
And I think, I think four weeks is enough to at least get that conversation going-
Okay.
-and get a meeting, understanding where the issues are, and just trying to get that collaboration between engineering and PD.
Thank you.
Commissioner Strand, do you have something?
I guess where my head sometimes goes is what are our policies that need to be considered and explored, or implemented, or taken off the books? You know, I'm not sure what we procedurally need to do with policies, but that's, I'm very open to what are our laws, what are our ordinances, what are our requirements now? For example, when the chief was talking about our hopes with the legislature that they do some things and hold owners of vehicles accountable for what their vehicles are doing, it's sometimes more than a speed bump or a change in lights. It's some of those policies relative to vehicles, I suppose. Who owns them? Who's in charge of them? Who's responsible for them?
Correct.
And to me, that's a part of this discussion. Another thought, just to share it, is I really welcome, as you open this process up, to hear from the people. We do hear from folks, and they have some interesting ideas, but I, the more we let them know, hey, we're all ears, welcoming your input, now's the time to do it.
And I think some of the things we've just been talking about internally, too, is, as we collaborate with PD, can we find tools to help get them maybe more data to help at the next legislation? And can we get more information on the books, so they understand how much of a safety issue this is?
Thank you. Any other discussion? And it's okay, friendly manner, she will work with whatever department she needs to work with to get this study done. Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Number forty-one, recommendation for appointment of the Assistant City Administrator. I think she was just at the podium.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce our new Assistant City Administrator. She was just at the podium, as you just said. And I'll tell you a little bit about our process. We recently conducted a national search for our vacant position. We had a total of forty-two applications that were received, and we utilized a selection committee, as we do for all of our department head positions. And we had seven candidates that our selection committee met with at a semifinalist stage, and then we advanced five finalists to in-person interviews, and those occurred on May fourth and May fifth. And let me just take this opportunity to say thank you to that selection committee, because their contributions were invaluable. They really helped us with our selection process, and really helped us think about the right kind of candidate, the right kind of fit for this opportunity for the city of Fargo. I've listed the names in your packet, that's in your memo, of the individuals who served on our selection committee, several from inside the organization, but also a special acknowledgement to Robert Wilson at Cass County Government. So at the conclusion of this competitive process, as noted by the mayor, Brenda is a recommended candidate for the position. She has, for the city of Fargo, over thirty years of experience serving our citizens, serving our community, with many of those years in leadership roles, in senior executive positions. And so she has an extensive network of internal relationships, as well as operational knowledge and experiences here. She certainly has my full support, my full confidence going forward. I know she's going to do a great job for this organization, and I just request the city commission tonight to approve the recommended appointment, as stated in your packet. And I would just make one final note, that this transition is really going to occur over the next six weeks. Brenda's going to help us out on kind of a part-time basis, upstairs and downstairs in engineering, over the month of June, and then by the time you get to early July, right after the Fourth of July holiday, she'll be joining administration full-time. So I just want to give you that overview of the timeline as well. So just appreciate your consideration of the recommendation of our selection committee and my recommendation as well this evening. Thank you.
That was an excellent process. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Brenda, congratulations on your new job, and I think you'll excellently represent the employees of our city, and I wish you luck with this. Little headaches that come with the two, I heard, but good. Commissioner Strand.
I want to acknowledge that we do really well with diversity, with women getting into administrative positions in Fargo. And Brenda, you're another example of that. It's also a benchmark for us to adhere to or to strive to attain for all our other elements of diversity. But you're just, it's gratifying to see that mindset in our culture. Not everybody is as embracing of women in the workplace and leadership roles, and Fargo does extraordinarily well, and our performer, people deliver really well. So congratulations, Brenda, on many fronts, but that one as well as to opening up that, lifting that artificial glass ceiling even further.
Any other comments?
Women.
Roll call, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Forty-two, you have my recommendations for civil service, commission? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
You have applications for property tax exemptions for improvements to made to buildings? Do I have a motion?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Mike, was there a typo? There's one name here that's honored twice, Kelly and Todd McComb. Is there?
Two different properties.
Twenty-seven, twenty-two.
Mayor, we can look at that very briefly. That could also be for two different exemption qualifications as well.
I had asked in the office, and I was told it was two different properties.
Oh, okay.
So it wasn't an accident.
Thanks, John.
I was told.
Liaison, liaison commissioner assignment updates. I'll start, Commissioner Pepcorn.
No update.
Commissioner Preston.
Yeah, just briefly, want to just indicate the border health met, the new border health met for the second time just last week, and we viewed the suicide video that was put together by communications and with Health Department and the foundation. And then we had a Be Smart presentation, which is basically a gun safety program that was presented by one of the pediatricians in town, and relates directly to the whole suicide issue, in that guns are definitely the most lethal way suicides happen. So a lot of the meeting was around mental health, it's Mental Health Month, and how to, how to better care for our family and our residents. So it was kind of a heavy meeting, but it was good, it was really good, so. And then just briefly with the planning department, if you want to just advance a couple of slides. Yeah, there we go. Just very briefly, again, reviewing, we are on phase one, which is looking at our current path, and it's still data collection. You can go to the next one. And it's confusing, because there's probably, well, there's three subcontractors with this team, and strategic economics, if you want to go to the next one, was here last week. And next week, strategic economics is looking, obviously, at the fiscal impact and some of the demographic issues. And then next week, MRB, which is more on the engineering side, will be here next week. You can flip again. And keep going. Oh, there we go. That's the end of it. So just, we're moving along, and hopefully, everybody had a chance to meet some of the consultants as they're coming in. That's it.
We had a couple subcommittee meetings this week, which are good, and working with police and health, public health. We have a group working on crisis management, and a team is looking at how to manage a variety of different issues throughout the community, in which we need to mix, mix mental health with our police force and how we manage people. And trying to get away from crisis management to, here's what we'll do when this happens. So I think that's moving along very well. John Strand may talk to it a little bit more, but very pleased. Just for the public, you know, consent agenda, we did a bid award for Substation Eight, and I don't, Colpak may mention this, but it came in just a little over budget, but we're very pleased with the budget came in, five million and three hundred thousand, so that's fantastic for us to get that. We did discuss the addiction dollars. The addiction dollars the city of Fargo will get is going to be managed by Public Health. West Fargo is going to join in with that, as well as Cass County, and it's a considerable amount of money. It may be a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, which we can look for ways of helping many of our people in our community. And last thing is Dispatch Center, the site was finally discussed, and it's going to be at the Public Service Building up by the fire station. The Dispatch Center is a consortium of all the cities and counties in this area. Chief Dirksen, I want to thank you for all your hard work on that, because we're looking at that and trying to figure it out. One of the difficulties we have as a community is that price has gone up quite a bit, and it looks like the bearing of those would be the city, the county, and West Fargo will have to try to figure out how to pay for those types of costs. But our dispatch centers are 911, and that truly needs to be funded, and in a building that takes care of it. I think the thing we have found is for the employees, it's a different type of work area than it has been in the past, and you have to address that because of all the stress those people are under. But we're making progress, and Chief tells me we might get this done in the next eighteen months, so very pleased about that. Thank you. Commissioner Colpak.
Yep, I just have three slides tonight. Thank you. The first is a big thank you to Public Works and contractors for last two weeks of solid waste cleanup week event, and it concluded with some pretty remarkable statistics, fourteen hundred tons of residential curbside collection, fifty tons of residential transfer station collections, six hundred and seventy-six truckloads to the landfill, over two thousand tires, six hundred and ninety-two freon containing units, and a hundred and eighty-five dryer washing machines. So again, a big thank you to all those who worked, and a reminder that Fargo residents can utilize the residential transfer statement, station year-round to drop off unwanted household items free of charge. So thank you. Fargo Fire Department update, excuse me, completed a week of strategic planning last week. We had a number of community leaders show up. I was able to also participate in that event, and it's an impressive effort for a five-year update of the next five-year strategic plan. So thank you to all who participated in that. And then additionally, work continues on fire station number two remodel. We should see wall and roof construction this week, with an anticipated completion date by July seventeenth of this year. And then this is a picture from Fire Ops 101 with Captain Eric Eisenlohr. That's me, apparently Peter did get to the rescue before I did. Congratulations, Peter. I want to, it was an honor to participate in this, and it's open to the community and media to participate. Some of the issues that we learned about were an overview of fire equipment, removing car doors and car roofs, an overview of the community and charity work that the team does every single day, a course from the fire marshal on prevention and investigations, a search and rescue effort, which you see here, and then also eliminating a real fire. And I actually lucked out there, because my fire really never got roaring like the other two candidates who participated in that event, so, so thank you for all of your work. I would just want to also, in addition to the obvious calls by the fire department every day, over fifteen thousand last year, not everyone knows about their attendance at many community events, their commitment to muscular dystrophy for several years, and their charity fund from their own pockets that helps citizens for things like taxi cab drives and children's gifts while navigating calls. So again, thank you for your service every day, and it's a day I will never forget.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I, just a few updates. The Downtown Community Partnership City Working Group is just really getting a lot of traction. There's topics unfolding. I think, I think we're really ready for this, this warm weather that's already started. One of the aspects you've heard about is there's an RFP out there for a noise study. There's discussions with what do, what are our future policies with regards to performing art, buskers, and entertainment on Broadway? That's, when you have a growing downtown, you have growing issues with things that happen downtown, and that's one of the ones that we're trying to get our arms around, is a balance between the performers and the people, and the residents and the businesses downtown. That's, that's evolving. But one of the aspects of that is we're going to have a meeting soon with some of the performers and the buskers to talk things through. How can we go at this summer in a way which is less antagonistic? Frankly, we're not always friendly with each other. We've become at odds with each other, and our hopes are we can resolve that and get forward with a, go forward with a peaceable summer for everybody's sake as much as we can, and have everybody's input into these policies as we evolve them. Will there be locations for performers? Will there be noise ordinances in effect? Will there be timelines? Those are all details to be worked out and are unfolding. That's the DCP topics. And they have the street fair coming, so that's right around the corner for them, their biggest event of the year. Just an update, the Native American Commission, I'm guessing you will be seeing soon bylaws changed for the Native American Commission, and some of their approaches will be different. They'll be meeting every other month with some cleaned-up bylaws. One of the changes that will be coming forward is to remove as voting members the city liaison and the school board liaison. So I actually voted against my own position there. I'm no longer on the Native American Commission. I think I've been there eight or nine years. But that seems proper. It's a Native American commission, and we're there to hear the voices of the native community. The rest of us will be resources, but that's an evolved change coming. The HRC Human Rights Commission is really working hard. They've rolled up their sleeves. You can about imagine, in the climate in North Dakota, and I'm not talking weather, the Human Rights Commission has had their hands full. There's a lot of topics that are close to home to them, that are close to their heart. They, I just, you can about imagine how disheartened they would be and are about the trans bills and the impacts on at-risk populations. You know, we talk about suicide, and we talk about suicide ideation, and then meanwhile, we're having actions in our state that are just contributing to that problem more. So I'm looking forward to constantly supporting our Human Rights Commission as that voice in our community, that is representative of the folks that don't always have a voice, that aren't always at the table. You know, and one last note, I know there's a mention at the HRC coming up this week to acknowledge Dr. Gandhi and the school district's position, but I join also in the leadership from, from the school district at this moment. It's, it's difficult to stand up and say, you know, the laws you're passing are going to create problems for some of our kids, and we're just not easily buying into it. We don't want to do damage to kids. So that topic's unfolding, too.
Anything else for the good of the order? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.